Sure, sure.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you will call the roll and read the prepared statement.
January 22, 2019, please be advised, this meeting is being taped for audio and video broadcast. The meeting will also be closed captioned. It's important that everyone speak clearly into the microphones, and only one person speak at a time. Assisted listening devices are available. Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Corcello.
Here.
Mr. Hosten.
Present.
Mr. Sachinelli.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Melendez.
Here.
Mr. Uranides.
Present.
Mr. Dumas.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kaidis.
Here.
Ms. Siegelbaum.
Here.
Mr. Hempstead. Mr. Siranides.
Here.
Mr. Ignary.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Thirteen present, we have a quorum.
Thirteen present, we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 8, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Ignary moves. Any corrections, deletions, omissions? Mr. Livingston.
Thank you. On page eight, third paragraph, where it says, the second line says Representative Dickinson, it should be Representative Jacobs. Wrong meaning.
Any other corrections? Ms. Smith.
Yes, one seemingly minor one on page nine, where it says Ms. Smith agreed that the ordinance is only at the beginning, and said she would like to tackle plastic straws and also styrofoam.
Plastic straws and styrofoam.
And styrofoam.
Any further corrections?
Page five.
Ms. Young.
Under Finance, number four, it should say a sole source, it says a dual source.
Okay, where is that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, under number four, under Finance, authorize the purchasing agent to issue purchase orders to Eagle Blue.
Ah, yes. Sole source.
On page six, under approve as revised, one, two, three, four, I think it's the fifth paragraph down, aerial photography of the entire city, not he.
See?
Page seven, D, under Recreation and Parks, one, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph down, to begin.
Okay, it's B-I-G, V-E-G-I-M.
To begin, at eight p.m., to begin.
Any further corrections?
That's it.
Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes as corrected. Opposed? Extentions? Carries unanimously, was that?
No, I, I was.
Oh, okay. So it's unanimous, approved, as corrected. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Do we have anybody wishing to address the council?
Nobody has signed up.
Nobody has signed up to address the council? Is there anybody that maybe came in late? Okay. Public participation would be closed, under the Mayor's section. We have no resignations, appointments, first appointment, actually, there are two appointments together, we can put them both at the same time, Nicholas Scott Cantor, no, I'm sorry, we have to do them separately, Nicholas Scott Cantor, Zoning Commission alternate, do I have a motion? Mr. Kaidis.
Yes, I'd like to move Mr. Cantor forward for, as an alternate to the zoning commission. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Cantor, I don't believe, I don't know if he's here or not. Oh, there he is, I'm Mr. Cantor.
He's here.
Now we've officially met. You have a very impressive resume, very impressive, well-educated, I, you know, many people say good things about you, so I, we're lucky to have you, and thank you for serving.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Cantor. Next item is the appointment of Marilyn Altman, Zoning Board of Appeals alternate, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Ignary moves.
I will. I am happy to not nominate Marilyn Altman to the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate. Besides an impressive resume, I've known her for a number of years, and I've found, no matter what subject you're going to discuss, your research is well, and has the pros and cons, and makes a strong argument. I think that's the type of person we're going to need on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, welcome aboard. If you can come down, we will administer the oath of office, and we can make you official this evening. Oh, this way. I know this is the first time, it gets confusing, but, how are you? Nice to see you again. Nick, how are you?
Down, by the way. Congratulations.
You, Marilyn Altman, having been appointed as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office according to your best skill and judgment, so help you God, upon the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
I'm going to sign part of this, and then I'll give you the other. And then Nicholas. You Nicholas Ascantor, having been appointed as an alternate member of the Zoning Commission of the City of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office according to your best skill and judgment, so help you God, upon the pains and penalties of perjury. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for serving. I'm going to give you these, sign both, yes, this is yours. And let me, let me sign this for you, Marilyn.
Sign both and keep one.
One is yours.
One is yours, and one is ours. There's two here, there should be.
Okay, Marilyn, here's the second one, this is mine, right?
And that one's yours, keep. Thank you, congratulations.
Nice to meet you, Paul.
Next item on the agenda is Mayor's remarks. First of all, over the past couple of days, we've had some extremely cold weather. Not only would I like to thank the people that came out to the Common Council tonight, the people that are down at the P O C D, public hearing, but also the people that came out last night in brutally cold weather to celebrate Martin Luther King Day here in the City of Norwalk. It's a testimony to the dedication and commitment of our residents. Libraries, over the next couple of days, and as necessary, will be open as warming centers, as will the community room in the Police Department. The elderly and small children are especially vulnerable to excessive cold. More cold weather and safety precautions are on our city website. I would also like to applaud Skip the Plastic Norwalk and Surf Rider Foundation, the Norwalk River Watershed Association, Wilton Go Green, and the Norwalk Cub and Boy Scouts. As many of you may have seen, we had a cleanup of Oyster Shell Park on Saturday. It was a tremendous, tremendous success. We, we have some results here. We picked up over 400 pounds of trash and debris that were in that small area by Oyster Shell Park. There were plastic straws, plastic bottles, plastic bags, and a lot of garbage. So I want to thank everybody who showed up, remind everybody that on April 27, I know it's a few months away, the weather will be warmer, we hope, and we'll have the citywide cleanup Earth Day, celebrating Earth Day. It's always an event where we have 150 to 200 people turn out and clean up various parts of Norwalk. We want to keep Norwalk beautiful, and I want to thank all the people who are so environmentally conscientious that they, they help out. It's, it is a big help, and you saw the pictures of the trash that we picked up in that small area. I think you'd be overwhelmed, but you'd also be a little discouraged that we have that kind of trash in our, on our, along our waterway. Reminder, the Common Council has worked diligently every single year to implement tax relief for the elderly or disabled, and we want to remind everybody that homeowners can, the applications can be submitted, beginning Friday, February 1st. Those who have participated in the program in the past, and they need to reapply. Some were put on a waiting list or requested more information, and will be receiving information in the mail from the Tax Assessor's Office. The application period is open February 1st through May 15th. A press release will be going out next week to the public. It's one way that people can take advantage of tax relief, especially people that might be living on a fixed income. The City of Norwalk would also like to remind federal employees of the state and local resources available to help in these very difficult times. Those affected by the government shutdown are encouraged to contact Human Relations and Fair Rent in Norwalk for assistance in identifying resources available during the shutdown. Person to Person, which is located on South Main Street in Norwalk, is also waiving income guidelines for its food pantry for federal employees affected by the shutdown. Last but not least, this Friday is the Norwalk Annual Mayor's Ball. It's always a wonderful event, non-political, just a good time, and getting an opportunity to meet people that you might not have seen for the past year. Anyone who has not made their reservation by this evening can see City Clerk Donna King after the meeting, this is she right here. It's the last opportunity to book your seats and to pay for your reservation. This year's beneficiaries of the ball are the Domestic Violence Crisis Center and the Literacy Volunteers. Domestic Violence Crisis Center helps people, most predominantly women, who are the subject of domestic violence, domestic abuse, and it's a wonderful, wonderful organization. Literacy Volunteers helped about 400 people each month, helping them with their English language skills, helping them integrate into our community, and helping them feel more confident if they want to get involved in their children's education. So both organizations are truly worthy of this year's recognition. So again, if you're available on Friday night, and you'd like to come out and have a great time, see Ms. King. Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's consent calendar will be read by Mr. Uranides. As a reminder to those watching, if an item you're interested in is on the consent calendar, that means it is approved, and there will be no further discussion. And just a reminder, Ms. Young, you will be reading next month.
All right. Buckle up, ladies and gentlemen. 6A1, authorization for authority to file offers of compromise, Brawlio Segura Ordaz and Samantha Segura versus Francois von Rensburg et al. 7A1, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement with Gordon Fine Arts for the use of 50 Washington Plaza, Washington Street, North, South Maine, and surrounding streets, along with Veterans Park parking for an arts festival to be held Saturday, August 3, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, August 4, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., set up to take place at 6:00 a.m. Friday, August 2, 2019, with tear down no later than 8:00 p.m. Sunday, August 4, 2019, estimated attendance, 1,500. 7A2, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Gordon Fine Arts for the use of Matthews Park for the Norwalk Art Festival to be held Saturday, June 29, 2019, and Sunday, June 30, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day, set up to take place Friday, June 28, 2019, at 7:00 a.m., with tear down no later than 7:30 p.m. on Sunday, June 30, 2019, estimated attendance, 400. 7A3, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with NICE Inc. for the use of Oyster Shell Park for the annual NICE Festival to be held Saturday, July 6, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., set up to take place Friday, July 5, 2019, at 6:30 a.m., with tear down no later than 12:00 noon Monday, July 8, 2019, estimated attendance, 4,000. 7A4, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Mid Fairfield Child Guidance Center, Inc. for the use of Calf Pasture Beach for their annual Penguin Plunge to be held on Sunday, February 24, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with setup to begin at 9:00 a.m. and tear down no later than 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, February 24, 2019, estimated attendance, 100. 7A5, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Norwalk YMCA Camp Sunrise for the use of Silvermine Elementary School grounds for their summer camp to take place Monday through Friday, June 24, 2019, to August 16, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., estimated attendance, 150. 7A6, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with JS Endurance for the use of Veterans Park for their Sono Half Marathon 5K to be held Saturday, October 19, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., with setup to begin at 6:00 a.m. and tear down no later than 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 19, 2019, estimated attendance, 1,500. 7A7, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with MBI Inc. for the use of Norwalk High School front lawn and parking area for their NHS Winter Guard Percussion Home Show to be held Saturday, March 23, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., estimated attendance, 2,500 staggered. 7A9, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Crowley Auto Groups for the purchase of a Ford Escape SUV for a sum not to exceed $24,147, account noted. 7B1, accept and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated January 10, 2019. 7B2, for informational purposes only, narrative on tax collections dated January 10, 2019. 7B3, for informational purposes only, monthly tax collectors report dated December 2018. 7B4, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Microsoft for Government Cloud Office 365 Solution Project for the city's email system of 875 users for a three-year term with one optional two-year extension for an annual amount not to exceed $62,867.25, account noted. 7B5, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Connection Business Solutions, a Microsoft Gold Certified Implementation Partner, for deployment services related to the migration of the city's email system to Microsoft's Government Cloud Office 365 Solution, per quotation noted, dated November 5, 2018, for an amount not to exceed $19,999, account noted. 7B6, authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to execute the tax abatement tax filing agreement between the City of Norwalk, the Norwalk Housing Authority, and entities totally controlled or owned by Trinity Washington Village Phase III Limited Partnership. 7C1, authorize the mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the June 5, 2017 contract with Ty &amp; Bond, Inc. to provide professional engineering services relative to the Norwalk levy for an amount not to exceed $193,050 for construction observation services for project number noted, pavement management program, account noted. 7D1A, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with AV Tucci, Inc. for the Mill Hill Jail and Barn Site Accessibility Alterations, Phase 1, for a total amount not to exceed $414,600, funding from deep administered OPM grant, account number to be assigned. 7D1B, authorize the Historical Commission to issue change orders on contract for a total not to exceed $41,000. 7D2A, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Antonasi Associates to provide architectural design services for various projects at Norwalk High School for a total not to exceed $449,000, account noted. 7D2B, authorize to establish a contingency for additional services as may be required for a total not to exceed $44,000.
Thank you, Mr. Uranides. Any discussion on the consent calendar as read? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Next item that we will next be discussing is item 7A8, Mr. Corcello.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with L A Z Parking for the management of parking at Calf Pasture Beach, Shady Beach, Taylor Farm, Veterans Park, and Cranberry Park for the 2019 season for an amount not to exceed $180,000, account number to be determined. What this is, is our interim director of Parks and Rec has worked on this for quite a while. Some time ago, several years ago, there were some improprieties with regard to the collection of fees at, at the beach. We think we have those corrected, but it's still a cash system. There was actually some software that was purchased, and for logistical reasons, that never worked out. Built into this year's budget is the sum of $85,000 to purchase software so that this can be done on an automated, cashless basis. Mr. Hughes, who is available to speak to us, indicates that it's actually going to come in around $60,000. What this is going to mean is that residents are no longer going to have to go down to City Hall, get a pass so that they can go to the beach. If their car is registered in Norwalk, their taxes are paid, there's going to be an automated device which reads, reads their license plate, and they come in. It's going to cut, it's going to add efficiency, accountability, it's going to cut down on traffic getting in and out of the beach. If you're a non-resident, you want to purchase a full-season pass, once again, you can register your plate online, and your plate can be scanned. If you don't have, if you're not a Norwalk resident, if you haven't registered for a seasonal pass, you can pay that day. There's going to be apps that are available, but not everybody is good with that technology. There's going to be advertisement, there's a phone number, you can call, you can put in your credit, put in your debit card, and you can park. There have been some abuses where people will be allowed to come in and park till, from like 8 till 11:00 in the morning for a race or whatever, and then they're supposed to leave, and they stay at the beach for the whole day. Other abuses are where non-residents park, where residents park. That's great, we're going to have the software, but we need the enforcement. L A Z Parking will do that, that's, that's what they do. They will be able to drive around the lot, determine if somebody who is not paid, or who has not paid for the time they're there, or who is not in the proper lot, doesn't belong there, and if so, they can issue a summons. It's a cost-neutral situation. The fee with the contract with L A Z is $180,000. Right now, we pay individuals, part-time, seasonal individuals, the sum of $178,000 to work the beach on this cash-based system, and that's 178, it doesn't include workers' compensation, unemployment, Social Security, so it's, it's a cost-neutral function, it's going to add efficiency, and I think it's, I think it's time we did it. And Ken Hughes is here, he's studied this pretty carefully. Any contingency you may have, if you may want to question, he can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Corcello. Further discussion? Mr. Kaidis.
I guess, real quick, summation, Mr. Corcello, you summed it up very well. Couple of things I want to point out, maybe use this venue as, as my opportunity. A big issue in the past was the dog walkers and their inability to find a spot over in Taylor Farm, because it's being taken, those spots are being taken by out-of-town residents who aren't paying, and enforcement of that parking was left to the police, and more times than not, the police would have to be called to, to, to violate these cars, and that won't be the case anymore. So I know the, these dog walkers down there, they're, they're a vocal group, and I know they're paying attention to the outcome of this vote tonight, so I can tell them, rest assured, that now you'll have a place to park when you go walk your dogs. And to Mr. Corcello's point, I think this is going to, is going to, is more efficient way for Norwalk residents, now you don't have to go online, print out your pass, you could just drive in, you don't have to wait in line. I think this is a long time coming, and thank you, Ken, for dealing with, you know, all the various departments to put this together, because I'm sure that was not easy. So I fully support this.
Further discussion? Mr. Hosten.
Just for clarification, you said if somebody wants to just pay for one day of parking, they don't have a season pass, there's an app they can use?
Yes.
Ken, you may be answered.
Hi.
And just, would any of the L A Z personnel be able to help if somebody's having trouble with the app, or, for example, if, you know, as can happen, software malfunctions, is there a backup for if that doesn't work?
Absolutely. You can pay either through the app, or there's also going to be a phone-in number, so if you have a flip phone that isn't app-enabled, you can pay with a flip phone. And we're also going to have, for at least the first few months, what I'm going to call a beach ambassador, which is going to be somebody at the gate who's going to be able to answer any questions or provide assistance. And also, L A Z is trained to offer, you know, the same assistance also with the, with the app. And I just want to mention that this is not only for the beach, but it's also for Veterans Park and Cranberry Park also. And just a slight correction with Mr. Corcello, we don't actually sell season passes to out-of-town residents. There are five towns within the area, if they're a landlocked town, they're allowed to buy a season pass, but other than that, it's the daily rate. And another good thing about this system is people can now prepay to come to the beach. So if you and your family are out of town and plan on coming to the beach on Sunday, you can actually pay on Thursday or Friday, drive into the beach and park, and then you'll be all set.
Further comment or discussion? Mr. Kaidis.
Yeah, it's a good point to bring out, bring up, especially that, you know, we have folks at home watching us, and where there, the parking along the waterfront was, is for Norwalk residents specifically in the past, that hasn't been the case, I guess whomever had paid at the door at the gate was allowed to, was parking there with, you know, no chance of being told otherwise.
Correct. One of the, one of the nice things about technology now is not only do we have the license plates, but we also can dictate certain parameters for these license plates. So for example, if you're a non-resident, you come into the beach, you pay for parking, but yet you park in a designated resident-only parking spot, the technology will pick that up, and will be able to issue a ticket based on you parking in a spot you're not supposed to be parking at. And this will all be heavily posted. I have been working with Josh Morgan from the Mayor's Office, and we're going to advertise this. You know, if it does pass tonight, we'll advertise between now, and we plan on implementing it around May 15. And I also want to let the council know, just to kind of give you a magnitude of what goes on at the beach, this past season, we collected $400,595 at the gate at Calf Pasture alone, and about 75% of that is cash. So that's, that's kind of an uncomfortable feeling, you know, so I think with this system, it gives us better control, and it gives us, you know, kind of a means of checks and balances on the entire system.
And not just better control, we're putting the convenience for Norwalk residents first, which I think is great.
Correct, because now, now Norwalk residents will be able to drive right into the beach and park, assuming that they're up to date on their taxes, and there's no issues with their car registrations. But, you know, I've been working with Karen with IT, and they're going to automatically enter all the vehicles off the grand list. So technically, a resident does not have to go online to fill out their information. The only time right now they're going to need that resident pass is if they want to go to the transfer station or the debris site. But I am working with Chris Torrey and DPW, and he's very interested to actually hop onto our system also. If that's the case, then we'll need no more paper passes at all in Norwalk.
Ms. Smith.
Yeah, Ken, I think it's worth mentioning what kind of revenue increase we might see.
Sure. We were told, you know, throughout my meetings with these different companies, we were told we can expect a 10 to 20% increase the first year a system like this is implemented.
Further discussion? Questions? Seeing none? Call the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. And thank you for the good work, it's interesting. Next item, 7D3A, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move the two items, 3A and 3B, together and then speak to them. This is 3A, authorize the mayor, Harry This is 3A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an amendment to the agreement with Newfield Construction, Inc. as the construction manager for the Ponus Ridge School, new PK to eight STEM school renovation addition project to accept a guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $36,473,862, account noted. And 3B, authorize the NFCC to issue change orders on contract for a total not to exceed I want to talk about this briefly because this is the first major project we are doing under the school facilities improvement plan that was approved by the prior council. Those of you who weren't on the council may not know that it was $170 million prior to the state funding portion of it. So it's out of pocket for the city, it's about $130 million. And this is the first major project since the Norwalk High School additions back in 2007. So it's a very significant project. It's going to add 35,000 square feet to the existing Ponus School. As you may know, Ponus is now sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. This is going to add PK to five, and it's going to be done in phases. We'll rebuild the addition first and move some students around, do work in various phases over the next few years. I'm sorry, the next year and a half, actually. It's going to commence tomorrow, according to Allen, assuming we approve this. If not, Allen's going to be out there stopping the truck. But it'll be finished... or scheduled to be completed in August 2020. And the one caveat to all this is that in the course of all the work that's gone into this, and there's been a lot of work going into this, they've discovered that there is a piping tunnel underneath the project that has some issues, so to speak. And we're not sure of the extent of the issues. I guess a rough estimate is they may be up to about $1,375,000, that is. And that's not included in this, simply because we don't know the full scope of that, but we may come back for more of that or may be able to fit into the contingency, we're not quite sure. But the hope is that we... and desire is to do that at the same time as we're doing the overall project, so we can have a project at the end that is complete in all respects. So I think it's a great project, I think it's exciting, and I think we should all improve it.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Further discussion?
By the way, Allen's here, I'm going to go to talk to him. Questions?
Further discussion or comment? Seeing none, Mr. Burnett.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting even further with the construction manager as stated. However, we have, as a committee, Land Use and Building Management have asked that the Board of Education provide updated enrollment numbers for several months, and we have yet to receive that information. And I think it's important that as we continue, and as stated, this is the first of several projects, capital projects, related to our school system, and we like to see them improve. We want to have the state-of-the-art schools for our students. However, we need the up-to-date and valid data to make reasonable and accountable decisions. And so I'd like to just make sure that it's on record that we are still looking for updated numbers in terms of the school population, in this case specifically that will be at Ponus Ridge School.
Further discussion? Just the other night at the Board of Education meeting last week, the board was presented with a very comprehensive list, breaking it down by male, female, ethnicity, different schools. So I'm surprised that they haven't gotten that to you yet, but I will reach out to them also to remind them that they need to provide this data in order for this body to make informed decisions. Further discussion? Seeing none, yes, Ms. Young.
I just have a question, just in looking at the memo from Allen. It says the budget includes the state reimbursement share.
Allen.
What is the question again?
So what is the state reimbursement?
Yeah, Norwalk gets 32.4% or so reimbursement from the state. So our total project is $43 million. Certain things are eligible, so you just don't take the straight number and multiply it by 32%. It's only eligible items that are... So generally speaking, there is... we submit, I don't have it in front of me, but it's 32% of eligible expenses.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Mary... Mary. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ignary?
I motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.